Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call into open session this work session meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on September 17th, beginning at 7:05 PM. The Board intends to make one of its scheduled meetings each month a work session. This meeting is a work session. It is AICD's common practice not to include open forum on work session agendas. No action or vote will be taken on any discussion topics. If any action or vote is taken on these topics, it will appear on future agendas as action or discussion action items, and will include an open forum so that the public may address the Board. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. We're certainly glad to see you. Mr. Hogg, would you please do us the honor and lead us in the pleasure of allegiance?
I would. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And if you'd please take a moment to silence your cellphone and electronic devices so that we will not have disruptions to the meeting, that would be awesome. And if you could join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Next, we'll consider the ratification of administrative appointment. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Solans, and I'd like to recommend that the Board approves the individual discussed in closed session to as a ratification.
We have a motion to approve the -- ratify the administrative appointment?
Move or approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Please vote.
All trustees voting in the affirmative. Motion carries. Well, Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Solans, and at this time, I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Carter Junior High School, Ms. Lizette Gonzalez.[182.23][182.23](APPLAUSE). Lizette attended Southern Methodist University to receive her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish and Latin American Studies, University of North Texas to receive her Master in Education for Ed Administration, most recently, an Assistant Principal at Berry Elementary School, has taught fourth grade bilingual at Berry, has been an instructional coach and a family liaison in Irving ISD, has taught third and fifth grade bilingual, as well as fourth grade bilingual and dual language. Lizette, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Solans, Dr. Cavazos, and members of the Board. I want to take this time to express my gratitude for allowing me the opportunity to be the new Assistant Principal at Carter Junior High. I'm really looking forward to working at this very special school. I've had the opportunity to be there already, what is it now, three, three and a half, five and a half days, four days, something like that, and I've just had a great time being there already. Mr. Lizardo has some great things going on over there, and I just want to let Mr. Lizardo know that you have my promise and commitment to do whatever I can to make Carter Junior High a success and help those kids there and get them whatever they need. It's a great time to be a part of Arlington ISD with a lot of changes going on, and I'm just excited for that opportunity to be able to take part in those changes and make a positive change. I also want to take this time and opportunity to thank my Berry family. In the past three, four years that I've been there, it's just been a really great learning experience, and all the support and love that they've given me has gotten me to where I am today. I thank them for what they've taught me, for their comments, for their suggestions, for just the love that they have for me and the support that they've given to me and my family. And I'd also especially like to thank Mr. Beaver and Mrs. Beaver. They're here tonight. Thank you for being my colleagues and my friends and for praying with me and for guiding me, and he's just a great leader. You know, we've gone through some really great times and some really great learning opportunities, and I hate it to leave Mr. Beaver, but I'm not seeing it as leaving, I'm just continuing with that neighborhood, you know, and working with that community. I just love it. It's what I'm meant to do. I see my career as a ministry, and so I'm just continuing on. You send them on to me. And also, I'd like to thank my family, and my husband especially, who are here tonight as well. I have my four boys, I like to call them, my husband and my three boys, and I also have my daughter, who isn't able to be here today. She's in high school, so she's doing her thing somewhere else. But, you know, I couldn't do it without them. I couldn't do it without my husband's support. I'm able to give 100% to the students and 100% to my career and my ministry because my husband is behind me and supporting me all the way. You know, he's got those three boys with him most of the time, and he's flawless. So, thank you. And that would be it for tonight. I'm just, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you for taking the time tonight to accept me into this position, and again, thank you.
Thank you.[382.13][382.13](APPLAUSE).
As is our custom, we ask that if you would follow Mr. Cale to the law before, so that we could come out and meet and welcome you to Carter, and if the audience would please allow the Board to go first, we'd appreciate that, and we'll take a brief 10-minute break and return approximately 7:20. Thank you.[400.34][400.34](MUSIC) Next item, thank you, and next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, I know earlier this evening, Ms. Powell's team displayed donations and bids with the audience earlier. Thank you, Ms. Powell, and we'd like to thank the community for their generosity. Anything on the consent agenda that we need to cover? Okay, very good. Is there a motion to accept?
Move to approve? Second.
A motion by Dr. Raj and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Is there any discussion?
Dr. Raj.
Dr. Raj. Second by Mr. Hibbs.
Yes, I can.
Is there, is there any discussion? Please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. The motion carries, so thank you very much. Brings us to our first item on the discussion agenda this evening. This evening is the Gibson Consulting Report. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Solans, and this evening, we have a group from Gibson Consulting to report on our student surveys, and as you know, that's part of our strategic plan, we survey our students to get their feedback about their learning environment, their experiences in school, and so Gibson has a report, and in addition, we have some next steps that we'd like to discuss also in terms of what we're going to do with this information, and Dr. Wertz will be providing that information. So, Amy, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us back again tonight. As you know, I know many of you have seen us and this presentation in prior years. We really enjoy having the opportunity to come and talk to you about what we found and having a discussion with you about the results, and so we have a lot of data to share with you tonight. I'm Amy Rappaport. I've met most of you, I think. I've been here presenting results for the last two years. I've been the project director for this project for the last three years. I have Eric Booth with me tonight. He's my colleague at Gibson, and he is the lead analyst this year with all of the data. He's going to be going through all of the results with you tonight. Also have Greg Gibson and Ali Thailand from our team over here, just to say hello. So, tonight, I'm going to walk you very briefly through why we're here, what we're doing here, sort of the approach we use to do the student survey, and just leading you into the results, and then Eric is going to come up and present the results from this year's analysis. I do want to say that while we have reserved time at the end for questions, we would very much like you to interrupt us as we go along and ask questions as you have them. I think it helps to ask them when they're top of mind and when we're actually talking about the specific results. So, please do go ahead and ask us questions as you have them. So, let me just start off by, you know, briefly reviewing why we're here and what we're doing. Three years ago, we were brought into the district to help capture data that was important to the district, that aligned to the strategic plan, and that were district priorities, but for which there was no archival data system or extant data available to create such metrics. And so, we created the student survey. The first year that we did it, it was for seniors only, grade 12 students, and it was designed to obtain key measures that relate to these six areas that were in the strategic plan. Quality of instructional practices, what do students think about the quality of their education? What kinds of instructional practices are they reporting, experiencing in the classroom? How safe do they feel in school? What do they think about the facilities, the quality of the facilities? Is the district fostering a culture of lifelong learners? These were all the measures that the district said to us, these are things we want to be able to capture. The next year, it was decided to expand the survey to ask questions to grades 6, 8, 10, and 12. So, now here we are in year three, where we have two years of data for 6, 8, 10, and 10, and three years of data for grade 12. One minor point, one point here is that this, the questions about what are students engaging in, what extracurricular activities are they engaging in, what community activities are they engaging in, this was something that was added to the survey this year, so when we get to those results, we only have one year of data for those. And just a reiteration here of, we have three, we have three years of longitudinal data for grade 12 students, and so when we present the results, we will try to focus not only on what were the results this year, but what has been sort of the pattern over time, and are we seeing changes, are we seeing similarities over time? And this is our second year for grades 6, 8, and 10. One other minor point is that we have all those six areas of questioning that I showed you, we have all of those for grade 12 students, but only a subset of them for 6, 8, and 10. We don't ask all grades every question, so we'll remind you as we're going through results which grades are applicable. I'm not going to spend too much time on talking about how we do the sort of nuts and bolts of what we do. We have a lot of data to share with you, and we really want to get into it. Of course, if you have questions, let me know. But I do want to pause and just give a major thank you to all of the staff at these schools because they are incredible, and we have a liaison at every school in your district, and they work closely with us and closely with the teachers to reach the students we're trying to reach and to get high response rates, which has been very successful, and so big thank you to them. We send materials to school liaisons, they distribute them to teachers, we target the students. Sixth grade is easiest because they're in their own classrooms. Eighth grade's pretty easy because they're in these computer classes. 10th gets a little harder, they're distributed throughout the school. 12th gets even harder. But despite that, we had over 14,000 surveys completed this year and an 84% response rate, which is really wonderful. It was a little bit lower than last year, and the only feedback I have on that is that we surveyed a little bit later in the year this year compared to the prior year, and that was a little bit challenging for some schools. But the take-home point of this slide is that we have data from over 80% of student, of the targeted students, in the majority of the schools in your district. And that's important because when we look at results, we have such a good response rate that we can feel confident that the results we have are representative of the students in the entire district population in those grade levels. And we do compare the demographics of the responding sample to the demographics of the district population, and we find mostly comparability, really, really, really close in terms of ethnicity and race and home language and whatever variables we have. We have good representation in the survey sample.
Have a quick question?
Yes.
You said interrupt, so.
Please.
The percent of campuses greater than 80%, any information on what made it harder for those campuses that didn't reach that threshold?
So, really, grade level is more important than anything else, so at the, for grade 6 and grade 8, I did have, I don't know sort of systematically what it was, but I know like at one school, there was class trips that were scheduled during the week of the survey window, and so there, it was something that really typically had to do with the timing more than anything else. But I will say that when it was lower than 80%, it was typically still like 75% or 74%. We didn't have any outlier schools that were really low. We worked closely with the liaison to up any response rates that were very low. Any other questions? One more comment before we move on is, I know I've mentioned this to you in prior years, but we know we're dealing with teenagers when we do these surveys, and we know that some teenagers are trying to, you know, give us some responses that may not be all that honest because they're trying to make our job harder, and so we do examine the data and we look at it, and we try to find what we call exaggerators, and we try to take, we flag them, and we take them out. It's pretty obvious when they're doing it, they give very extreme responses, they give, they'll complete the survey in a very unrealistic timeframe, for example, like 30 seconds and they're done with the whole survey, or they're just extreme response patterns. And so, this year, we had about 600 out of 15,000, so just want you to know the rigor that we're applying to the methods, that we're looking for that, and we're cleaning those One other comment, and then I'm going to turn it over to Eric, is we have these six areas of questioning, and we want to be able to really explore the results with you. We decided this year, there was tremendous comparability from last year to this year in many of these areas, and we've done some additional data analyses this year that we think are going to be really interesting to you. So, in the interest of time and on focusing your attention to the points that we think are really the most interesting, we're not going to be presenting results for areas 5 and 6, quality of facilities and lifelong learning. The results are covered in the report that we'll be providing to the district. Everything is in there, but for tonight, we're focusing on the first four, and of course, if you have questions about the others, we're happy to answer them at the end, but we're going to focus today's presentation on results in the first four areas.
I have a question.
Back to the response rates. Does the removal of the exaggerators impact the response rate?
No. The response rate was, that I gave you is before we remove the exaggerators.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and with that, I'm going to give you Eric.
Good evening. As Amy mentioned, we're going to focus on the first four areas listed here above. I'm going to go in order for the results for each of these sections, and the first section is on quality of instructional practices. So, in this section of the survey, we were asking students about their perceived quality of instruction. The question structure, and this will be true for all the questions we'll talk about, is a little bit different for, we differentiate the language a little bit by grade level so that it's more readable for sixth grade versus 12th grade, but the idea is that we asked them, thinking about this past year, tell us about the quality of teaching at your school, and we ask about all these different subjects, math, English, writing, science, social studies, and then only for 8, 10, and 12, we ask about languages other than English. And then for this question, the first one we're going to present, the scale is a 1-4 scale. It's poor, okay, good, excellent, and so we're going to show you sort of some patterns that existed across the grades. The way that this is going to be structured, the data isn't there yet. If you look at this graph, is that, I'm going to show you a few graphs that show the trends. Across, the top shows the subjects, and they'll light up in color in a second. So, again, I'm going to show you the trends for English, social studies, writing, science, other languages, and math. Across the horizontal axis at the bottom is each of the grades, so you'll see the difference between 6, 8, 10, and 12th grade on this question, and then what the percent on the y-axis or vertical axis represents is the percent that said good or excellent, so a 3 or 4 on the scale. These were students who were happy with the quality of instruction. So, the first thing to note is that across the board, English had the highest quality of instruction ratings, and so here you see that in 6th grade, it's at 79% of students said that their quality of instruction was good or excellent. It goes up in 8th and 10th grade, and it's slightly lower than the second, the blue line here, which is social studies. Social studies across the board was probably, you know, overall the second highest quality of instruction rating. It starts a little bit lower and then comes up in 12th grade and overtakes it, which is actually a little bit of an uptick from last year. It was, I think, 79% last year, so it's got an even bigger margin this year in 12th grade. The next trend is in math. So, math here, all we're doing, again, is I'm just changing the lines that are highlighted, it's the same data. You see math, this is almost exactly the same trend as last year. It started around 79%, and then you have this drop that is, you know, 15 percentage points or so through 8th, and then 10th and 12th is low. It's still 2/3 of students saying that their quality of instruction is high, but there is a drop across grades, which may not be that surprising, because as math gets harder, you can also have that reflected. And I think another subject where you see an interesting drop as it gets more difficult is science, and this one was a bigger in-between grade drop. So, again, it starts around 79% for 6th graders, and then from 8th to 10th grade, it drops from 79% to 61%. So, as students start taking, you know, probably their chemistry and physics and those sorts of courses, you see this drop, and it's a different kind of teaching. It's a more technical teaching, it requires a different kind of teaching. One thing it's important about, you know, the way we present this data is, we don't actually go on the campuses and observe the teaching and things like that, so we have this data, this data's to help inform you all and then eventually the campus staff, but we don't know the why behind some of these questions, but it is a very interesting pattern, and it's interesting that it's persisted across the years. It wasn't a one-time thing. And this, so, one thing that we could look at that's more interesting, and as Amy sort of alluded to this year, is we have student data that's associated with the surveys, not for all the students, just for high school students, and not a comprehensive battery of data, but at least some basic demographics and how their demographic characteristics and how they're doing in school in terms of their GPA and things like that. And so, this year, the district staff wanted us to investigate a little bit more about sort of what is associated with these quality of instruction ratings. And so, the next few slides look at the student of, ratings of quality of instruction by area, but looking at what kinds of students, what types of students in terms of their characteristics or performance sort of thing, answered that they thought they were getting a higher quality of instruction. This is sort of a first step in, you know, again, not having, having planned from the outset to be doing this much with it, but it's really fun and a great analysis, and we got some good insights from it. One thing that I think that is important here is the factors that come up that we discuss and that are discussed in the report, these are things that are statistically, they are systematic patterns. There are things that, controlling for everything we were able to control, if you look at statistically similar students, you see significant differences in their ratings of instruction by these different groups I'm about to discuss, and so that's really interesting. It's not just a descriptive pattern that could be a few percentage points or kind of a fluke or something like that. So, the first point here says that there's significant differences across campuses. That's something that we kind of go more into in the report, but we'll say at the end of the day, after controlling for all the student factors I'm about to discuss, that there were still significant differences across campuses, which is interesting, that, say, within math, that you might have at Arlington High School, very statistically significant, different quality of instruction than at another school, for instance. And so, we point some of that stuff out in the report, but here, we want to focus on some of the student characteristics that were associated with higher quality of instruction ratings. So, the first one, it may not be surprising, higher-performing students tend to rate their quality of instruction higher, but we had to put that into the model because it's, we knew it would come out, but, so now we know that that's the case here. But the other points are a little more interesting. First of all, we have a survey question that gets at the students who enjoy learning in the classroom. Those students definitely report higher quality of instruction, and then when we looked at economically disadvantaged students, there wasn't a statistical effect for just economically disadvantaged students. They weren't any different than their statistically similar peers, but when we did sort of, we looked at a subset, we drilled down a little bit, and you look at the highest performing economically disadvantaged students, those students were significantly different. They did rate their instruction higher compared with their peers who were also economically disadvantaged. And so, I think those first three are sort of interesting in isolation because they show that, it kind of confirms what we think in terms of the students who will give the highest ratings, but where we have the lowest ratings shown, these are obviously like opportunities for figuring out what student groups are saying that they aren't experiencing as high quality of education. So, one example is that when we looked at Hispanic students, they weren't necessarily any different from the other demographic groups controlling for all else, but the lowest-performing Hispanic students particularly, across some of the areas, but particularly in math quality of instruction rating, said that they were giving systematically lower ratings across the board. Students who reported on the survey that they feel less safe at school are giving lower quality of instruction ratings. LEP students, limited English proficiency students are giving consistently lower ratings. And then the last one is, special ed students gave lower ratings, but only in English. So, the next set of questions that, and I'll come back and relate the next section in a minute, back to quality of instruction, so, but I want to talk about instructional strategies next. So, we wanted to, the district wanted us to ask about instructional strategies in the classroom, and they identified some strategies that they thought were important for them to be happening at a rate and be salient enough that students could recognize it when they were asked about it. And so, we asked, again, by subject area, about math, English, science, and social studies, about how often they had seen or, you know, experienced these instructional strategies on a scale from 1 to 4, again, never, sometimes, most, the time, or always. And there's a lot of data here, but I'm going to explain the chaos, the pattern here. So, the way that we have this broken out, this is grade 12, but each of the strategies that were of interest to the district are listed down the left-hand side. So, the students reporting that they, the teachers held their attention, that they were given choices in how to demonstrate knowledge, to show what they know in writing in some way, that teachers stopped to check and make sure that they understood the concepts before moving forward, that students felt comfortable asking questions in the way that the teacher was allowing them to ask questions in class, and then that the in-class activities helped them learn. And so, we have this scale, and what's important here is that it's a 1-4 scale. We're going to show this with a threshold of this 3 as being kind of a threshold we'd like to see met, and that kind of gives you an indicator that most of the time or always, if on average, if it's hitting around the 3, then that seems to be happening. And so, the way the bars are broken out are that you have each subject, so the top one is purple, is social studies, and then you have science, English, and math. A quick look across 12th grade here is that, on average, math has the lowest rating for each of these strategies, and that'll be interesting sort of in a second, and then also showing what students know in writing is the lowest kind of overall. I see that there's the one that takes up the 3, but just the overall score across these grades I'm about to show is the lowest in showing what you know in writing. So, those are two umbrella takeaways, but I like the way that Amy actually put this last year because, I meant to show the math, sorry, the math is the lowest. But we're going to show the, I'm going to show the grade levels, but just sort of let your eyes fuzz over here and see the pattern. You're going to see that actually, as I go down in grade level, I'm going to show 10th grade, then 8th grade, then 6th grade, that the ratings go up. And so, as they go up, you'll see more of the subjects reach the 3 threshold, so that's 10th grade. I'll stop to talk about it in a second. 8th grade goes a little higher, now you have a lot more especially uncomfortable asking questions hit the 3 threshold. And then by 6th grade, you have quite a few that are at 3, almost, actually, all the comfortable asking questions, almost all the in-class activities help me learn have hit the 3 threshold or they're very close. The biggest gain was in checked understanding in math. In 6th grade, teachers are doing a really great job, and that's a huge increase from last year. Again, a lot of these other patterns didn't necessarily change, it was kind of the same pattern as last year. This was a marked increase compared with last year, so we thought that was interesting. So, one way to sort of think about the strategies and how they relate back to quality of instruction, we go into this a bit more in the report, but when you just look at what factors, which of these strategies are most associated with students saying that they got a quality, a high-quality instruction, and again, controlling for all the demographics, the two areas that were most associated are the held my attention, so students said teachers did a great job of holding their attention in class, and then also that they stopped and checked that they understood the concepts. Those two things were really key in predicting, or being associated with, I guess, higher quality of instruction appraisal by the student. And so, that, I mean, we present that in the report to sort of get an idea about how those two factors kind of relate, and this is actually the strongest in math. So, where, you know, you get the same pattern across all the different subject areas, but particularly for math, these two things were really, really important, high correlations. Okay, so, to this point, I've talked about quality of instruction, and I've talked about the strategies in the classroom, the questions the students have answered. This next section is about engagement with the student. So, the questions here, and these are not the full question text again, but we were getting at several concepts about sort of what was true for students in classes, what they were answering, that it was true most of the time or always is the scale you'll see on the right. what they were answering, that it was true most of the time or always is the scale you'll see on the right. So we have it broken out by grade here. And the questions we asked were about whether they thought classes were boring, kind of a customer satisfaction sort of idea, but we know that it's important to keep kids engaged, whether they enjoyed learning in class, whether they thought courses were challenging, whether they were giving opportunities to use technology, whether teachers were explaining the relevance about whether, how things mattered. And then finally, again, sort of how things were relevant to other subjects, so connected, materials connected to learning in another class. And a couple of patterns here. First of all, classes were boring is in red here because it's kind of the only metric here that's the opposite. Everything else is positive. But we wanted to explicitly ask one question that was the other direction and say, you know, what percent said they were boring? And you can see sixth grade has the lowest rate of students reporting that their classes were boring. And it it goes up across the grades. And so by the time you get to twelfth grade, it's about a third. In terms of enjoying learning in class, because we're now reversing the tone of the question, you can see it go the other direction. But the reason is because, again, in sixth grade, you have more students saying they enjoy learning in class. It goes down across the board. And then in terms of courses being challenging, it kind of goes up and down. It's not this sort of grade level determinative thing. It starts at forty-three percent, goes down a little bit, and then jumps up to fifty-two percent in tenth grade. So, for, I'm going to point out two patterns that I think are interesting. For the next two metrics about technology and explaining what's going on. For technology, it went up in eighth, tenth, and twelfth grade again this year. So from the first year to the second year of this survey, it went up. And in fact, in in the first year, it was just twelfth graders. It went up like fourteen points. It was thirty-something percent the first year we came presented. It jumped up. It jumped up again this year by another, I think, four percent to forty-nine percent. One place it went down between last year and this year in terms of opportunity to use technology was sixth grade. Sixth grade dropped by five percent. So we wanted to point that out. And then, the, the next one is about teachers explaining why the things that were learning mattered. Across the board, this one went down about two to four percentage points. But they were pretty significant drops between the between the years, and we thought it was important to point that out. It was about the same, like I said, two, three, four percent across each grade. And then for the last question, it's one of those questions Amy mentioned that we only ask of twelfth graders just because of the way the survey is structured. And about a third of students said that the learning they were getting in a class was sort of tangibly connected to learning in another class. So that concludes the first section on instructional quality and strategies. The next section is about school safety. This is always one that gets a lot of interest. Particularly, this is one that I'm I'm interested in. And I think we have some some findings this year that that a lot, it's not a lot of change, but there's some interesting things here. So the first thing to look at here is that, to this point, I've presented data that shows when students, you know, say mostly agree or are agree or have sort of a three or four on a scale of one to four. And that gives you an idea that they agree or saying something's happening all the time or most of the time. This scale, we have a one to four again, one being not safe, two somewhat safe, three mostly safe, and four very safe. When I go to the next slide, we're actually going to present for today the data on the students feeling not safe. We thought it was sort of important to look at the, I guess, extreme side of the scale to see what percent of students said they weren't feeling safe in certain locations. And that'll be what we do on the next table. And I know there, we've got sort of a question about presenting the information and saying what percent said mostly safe or very safe. So I'll talk about that, too. I don't have a slide for it, but I can talk about that contextually. So, again, coming in to this table, it's all about percent of students saying at the extreme they felt not safe in these locations. These data are about the same as last year. The, the, out around the school question, the eighteen percent there, you can see it's color-coded, the darker red's the the highest percent of students saying they don't feel safe, went down, I think, a point and a half. But, and then also in bathrooms in sixth grade, went from seventeen to sixteen percent. So there's there's a little bit of decline in those two kind of highest numbers. But it's about the same findings. And again, about eighteen percent of sixth graders said they didn't feel safe outside around the school. We break out things about schools and all that in the report, but because there's definitely differences. Eighth grade, it goes down to thirteen percent until you get to twelfth grade, it's about nine percent. Locker rooms and bathrooms were sort of the second highest area where students indicated that they didn't feel safe. In bathrooms, it's the highest in sixth grade. And then for both, both locker rooms and bathrooms, it goes down to about nine percent by twelfth grade. And then where students reported feeling, you know, I guess, the lowest rates of not feeling safe, or in other words, feeling the most safe, were lunchroom, hallway, common areas, and classrooms. I remember in the, I think it's the first year report, there was a blip where lunchroom was a little higher, and it went down last year, it stayed low this year. So, something, something changed about that. But, again, back to the point about the side question for what percent of students reported saying they felt mostly or always safe, and that's the three or the four on that scale. If, basically, I mean, it's, it it does follow the same pattern in the inverse. And so, to give you an idea, the top three categories there, outside around the school, in locker rooms, and in bathrooms, the average percent of students across the grades that said they felt safe most or all the time was about sixty, sixty-one percent for outside around the school, it's sixty-seven percent in locker rooms, and it's sixty-three percent in bathrooms. So it's in the sixties range. And then, once you get to the in lunchroom, you start to see a jump up. It's seventy-five percent of students said they felt mostly or always safe in lunchrooms, seventy-four percent in hallways, eighty-six percent is the highest for common areas. And then eighty, I'm sorry, also eighty-six percent for in the classrooms. So those, the percent that say they felt mostly or always safe, again, about two-thirds for the top three categories there, and it's about eighty to ninety percent for the last four, if that gives you a good idea. I meant to highlight there. So the next thing we looked at for school safety, we move on from location. The last slide was all about where they feel safe or don't feel safe. The next part is about why they feel safe or don't feel safe. And so here, we relied on some, some questions that were pulled from some some inventories that have scaled questions to get an idea about how safe students feel and then how respected students feel as well. We have both of these. And the first safety index or or sort of metric that we create is out of these questions. And so the questions are about whether students feel their teeth are put down, they feel like others' teeth are put down, there's too many fights, there's physical or cyber or verbal bullying happening. And so that kind of gives us a composite school safety score that we'll show in a second. The second scale that we looked at was about staff respect. And this is all about how much students feel they're respected by teachers and adults at their campus. So, it's, it, it's made up of whether teachers, they're, they feel that they respect them, they listen to what they have to say, that they think that they can be a success, and that they treat everyone fairly. So, when we look at the scores, it's a one to four scale. We have basically that two-point-five dot that moves across the middle. It's kind of a a general midpoint, just again, as a threshold. It's not anything that we we computed from the data, just to see where we're at visually. And these, these results are almost exactly the same as last year. So, sixth grade's a little bit higher, at about a two-point-seven-five out of four. And then the other eighth, tenth, and twelfth grader are a little bit lower on school safety. And then for staff respect, across the board, that scale is definitely a higher score, and it's, again, highest in sixth grade, lower across eighth, tenth, and twelfth, but not as much as low in eighth grade. Eighth grade's a little closer to sixth grade in this one. So then, the next section is on preparation for college and workforce. The questions here that we're asking about are about applying for college and preparation for workforce, things that students are doing in high school. So, these questions are asked for grade twelve only, I just want to point out, just to kind of give you an idea. And so we're just curious about these twelfth graders, about what they're doing to prepare for college and whether or not they apply. So this is self-reported data. This isn't connected to any of the, you know, national databases that look at students going to college. Looking back from the first year of the survey, when we asked, about twenty percent of students in our first year of seniors said that they were applying for, not applying for college, I'm sorry, and about eighty percent said they were. Last year, that number changed by one percent. It went down to seventy-nine, which is not really a significant change. And this year, it jumped from seventy-nine to eighty-three, which is a pretty significant jump. So, everything that I present after this about applying to college is a subset of that eighty-three versus seventeen percent. So we know seventeen percent didn't apply, eighty-three percent did apply, according to them. Now we're going to sort of break apart who those students are, so, and and how they have changed. The first way that we're going to do that is we're going to show the type of school that they applied for. So, I'm going to show some bar charts and bar graphs in a second, but it's going to be broken out. We asked questions about whether they applied at all, so they're left no applications category, whether they applied only to two-year schools, technical schools, things like that, two- and four-year schools, so they tried both, or whether they applied only to a four-year school. For no applications, again, we dropped, we went down to seventeen percent this year, so that went down. And we'll talk about who those students are in a second. For two-year only, it went up a percent. It went up two percentage points for both, applying for both of them. And then it went up a percentage point for four-year only between the last year and this year. Another way to look at this is to look at change in application rates. So, we're going to do this by by race ethnicity. And so here, this is the change between the years. If it goes above the zero point, it's a positive, so it's an increase in application or in that category. If it's negative, it's an increase, it's a decrease in that category. So for the first one, it's no applications. The biggest change and the only increase in no applications across the board were for white students. They went up four percent. The decrease in no applications that we saw is coming from mostly the Asian, black, and Hispanic students. When you look at two-year only, this is where you see the biggest jump for the Asian students. There's a five percent increase here. It's Asian-American students was the smallest of the groups, but it had a five percent increase within race category. You also see an increase there for white students of two percent, and then you see a decline for Hispanic and black. When you go to the both category, and the both category is different. So it's students who are definitely applying for more than one school, and we didn't ask them how many schools they applied for, but we know from this that they're applying for different types of schools, whether it's, you know, for different reasons or or backup schools or whatever it might be, funding. We don't know, but we know that they're applying for multiple types of schools. And here, the biggest jump was a five percent increase in the Hispanic students applying for both types of school. We'll talk about this more in a second, but if you remember last year, Hispanic students were the group that were kind of lagging behind their similar peers in application rates. And so here's one area, and we'll show some more in a second, where you see a tick up. For four-year-only schools, there's really kind of a one percent change both ways. It's, it's not huge, but it's there. So we're going to show the overall rates, and then we're going to show this in two other ways. I'm sort of slicing these same data different ways because it's kind of interesting. This one shows the application rates within the ethnicity group, where they applied. So this is overall. So here, you look across the, you can look across the num, the the lines, so, or the color bar. So the blue bar is white students. And you can see that seventeen percent had no applications, and you see twenty-two percent had two-year only, twenty-eight percent for both schools, and thirty-two percent for four-year-only schools. The circled line that I just hit there are the Hispanic students. And so you can see there what percent and how they sort of compare in terms of their breakout within their own group. Most of them are applying for two-year schools, and a low percent, a lower percent are applying for four-year only and for two and four-year. They still have the highest no-application within group rate, just, you know, within themselves, but it's, it's less than it was last year. And I'll show you in a second kind of where that, we think that's coming from. The other one to notice here is that this went up a little bit. The black and Asian groups both had the highest or pretty close to the highest rates of applying for two and four-year and four-year only. So, up to forty-two percent for Asian students applying for four-year only this year. So it went up a little bit. So, seeing these rates and the difference in rates is important. But another thing about going to colleges, there's a mechanism by which some students just aren't going to apply for college, some are. And one way, this is very rough to break it apart, but what's interesting is to think about this broken out by student performance. So the data we had available to us were GPA data, and we broke it into rough A, B, and C level, A, C, and below level GPA ratings, just to get an idea. This is not sort of reified in a, in a way where we have, you know, student performance data and all these other things. But we use GPA, and we broke it out by kind of A, B, and C-level students. And so this is what we see, is that for A-level students across the board, again, you'll, you'll see that Hispanic students still have the highest red bar there for no applications. So there's a lot of high-performing or a higher percent, I think that's like sixteen percent or something, of high-performing Hispanic students who aren't applying for any schools. And they are lower than their peers for high-performing Hispanic students applying for both two and four-year schools. So that third set of bars there. So, keep that in mind. I'm going to show the other grades, and we'll come back. For the B-level, these are students that are still great students. They're students who can, you know, go to college, and and obviously, all these students can, but have a great shot at going to the college of their choice. And you see the none, no-application status bars go up there quite a bit. So that's where you see room for movement, you know, that if you're looking for students who could apply for college, if, you know, you want to direct them that way, you see, you, you see the the none that's pretty high, and also the only two. And it may be that those students could be going to four-year colleges, applying for both, or things like that. So, and then the last one is C and below, and and so I think we could expect that the none is higher, and the rates of the both and only four is very, very low percentage points there. But I want to sort of point out that contrast between...
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's okay.
On that, for the, those B-level kids in the first two, none and only two, did that increase or decrease from last year?
For the none on the B-level?
Yeah.
It went up because the no-applications went up. It went up specifically for Hispanics and whites, if I remember right. But it was, it's higher than last year. I just don't know how many percentage points. I can look that up, though, for you.
Okay.
Be happy to. Okay. So, again, in terms of just getting an idea about sort of what these changes mean, it means that there are a lot of students that still aren't applying for two and four-year and only four, but there have been some gains. And you can kind of see where some of those students might be that could be applying for college at different, different types of colleges. Our next set of questions in the survey tried to get at what types of things students were engaging in in order to, you know, on their path to college. And so we're going to ask them, we asked them about counseling and different courses they took and different preparation, things they applied for. The first one's about working with school counselors. And we had a sort of scale of four different ways that school counselors could engage with them in terms of asking them about going to school and and career plans or whatever it might be. And so, basically, we just kind of took a sum of the scale to get an idea about how many of those four items most students reported, having, you know, happened to them or them, you know, what kind of interaction they have with counselors. And compared to last year, it went down a little bit in terms of for students in two and four-year and also just slightly for only two. And that's kind of the main finding from this. And then for the students who report applying for only four-year schools, it went up a little bit. So they have a little more contact or work with counselors. So the, what, for whatever reason, again, we don't know, but there's a little bit of a change in the way that counselors are interacting with these types of students. Next kind of way to look at that is what kind of activities that students are engaging in in order to, they're sort of either college-bound or career-bound. So we had six possible college-bound activities we asked about. And so these are things about, you know, applying for scholarships and FAFSA and taking, you know, entrance exams and preparation courses and things like that. And then we had three possible questions about career-bound activities, going to career cruising and talking to counselors about career options and things like that. And so, the, really, the only change, it's pretty stable. The only change between last year and this year, in terms of the average number of these activities that students report engaging in, it went, the number of kids who said none went down very slightly from one-point-six to one-point-five, and the number of kids from only four-year schools that reported it went down slightly. And then, number of kids from only-four-year schools that reported it went down slightly as well. But, for the, you know, the big difference there is the students who are engaging in these college-bound activities are the ones who are applying for four-year and both two- and four-year schools, which is not completely surprising, but you can see that it's pretty stable from year to year. It's not as stable for career-bound, because it actually went up this year. Again, we don't really know what's going on in campuses or anything like that, but there's a difference in that more students are reporting that some of these career-bound activities about, you know, college cruising and going and talking to counselors about getting technical certifications before they finish high school and things like that are happening more often this year at the campuses. So, this next slide is kind of parallel in the way that we're gonna present it, but this information is about staff support in terms of going to college or career. So, this is not about what the student did. We asked, you know, language about how students were doing things like, you know, taking a GRE course or something. This one is about staff engaging with the student to talk to them about career options, or talk to them about college majors, or talk to them about entrance requirements, and help them fill out a FAFSA and things like that. And so, here, for a college-bound, it's not a lot of change, it's very similar. There's, again, a little bit of a downtick, maybe point-one or point-two. The biggest one for this one is for the students going to two and four-year, which is kind of parallel with the counseling interactions graph I mentioned earlier, where there was less counselor interactions for students who apply for two and four-year. I know I just have a few more minutes, we're almost there. And for college-bound, the change is that it went slightly down. Siri likes my presentation.
Siri has a question.
Yes. So, for career-bound, it went down especially, again, for the two and four-year. So, in terms of students reporting that staff are working with them, it's gone down in counseling and in the career-bound activities for two and four-year, for students reporting, applying for a lot of more colleges, for two- and four-year colleges. So, the second research question that, when we worked with the district staff, that they wanted us to look into a little bit more, was about what kinds of factors, again, student demographics that we have available to us, help, are associated with students saying they apply for college. So, we're looking for patterns here, we're controlling for things, we're looking for statistical significance, but we're looking for systematic differences between student subgroups to say who's saying they're applying for college and who's saying they did not. So, first, again, there were statistically significant differences across campuses that are kind of interesting. They're pointed out in the report. I think they're good for informing district staff about targeting activities and seeing where differences lie, higher or lower than their other campus, than the other campuses. But, the first set of bullets, I'm sorry, second set of bullets here are about factors associated with students being more likely to apply for college. So, first one is, again, probably pretty straightforward. We start with the straightforward ones. More reported college-bound activities on part of the student. If they're saying they're, you know, filling out a FAFSA and going for scholarships, they're more likely, significantly more likely to apply for a college. When we looked at demographically the differences, the, one of the most interesting patterns that came out is, in terms of, again, GPA, the higher-performing Asian, white, and black students are still significantly more likely to apply for school, particularly the both-two- and four-year school than Hispanics. If you remember, in the chart, the Hispanic group was a little bit lower in the two and four, especially when you looked at those highest performing. When you start controlling for other things about the students, about their at-risk status and their special ed status, and, you know, their economically disadvantaged status and things like that, then you really see that difference come apart. So, while there's been lots of movement in terms of, in terms of more Hispanic students applying descriptively, there's still some room for movement there in terms of similar students that just aren't applying at the same rate as their peers. We looked at economically disadvantaged students who have, you know, as you might guess, challenges in applying and getting, applying and paying for college and things like that. The highest performing of those group, economically disadvantaged students, aren't any more likely than their peers. They're not even less likely than their peers, which I think is interesting, to apply for college. But, the highest performing economically disadvantaged students are overcoming barriers and applying for schools at a significantly higher rate than their peers. So, that is, you know, occurring. And then, the last one refers to a set of questions that Amy mentioned we added this year about volunteer and extracurricular activities, and those students that are reporting, engaging in more of those, and who we know are engaging in more of them, because we have, we associated their school records and saw that they were doing it, are more likely to apply for college. The students who are least likely to apply for college are the ones, first of all, who get more reported counseling interactions. We don't have the why for that, but, you know, you can guess about things with counselors that are probably going after the students who are more on the margin, or who need the help to sort of go. We don't have, you know, an answer, because we didn't go and study counseling activities. But, they are significantly less likely to apply for college. Special education students, lower-performing students, both of those probably aren't surprising. One that came out that's a really, actually, wide gap is male students are less likely than female students. And this is something that sort of matches up with national trends and research. But, just to give you a descriptive number behind this, I mean, there's an effect where male students are much less likely, or, I'm sorry, significantly less likely. So, of your students surveyed, eighty-seven percent of females said they were applying to any sort of college, only seventy-eight percent of males. Of student, of female students, thirty-three percent of females said they were applying to both two- and four-year schools, and only twenty-seven percent of males. So, that kind of gives you the idea of the gap descriptively as well. The last section, and then, this will be, that'll be the end, we're getting there, is after-school activities. This is the new section for this year. And so, we had four areas that were of interest to the district, they asked us to add. And really, only numbers two, three, and four did we add to the survey. The first one is about students who participated in co-curricular activities. We actually got that from the district, they sent us the data, so we wanted to present it side-by-side. The second, third, and fourth ones here are ones we asked about. We asked about various school-affiliated activities that weren't associated with the class, so, like, student clubs. We asked about off-campus community engagement activities, and then, we asked about community service and volunteer work. So, the results are kind of interesting. I'm gonna jump to the very last one first, and that is that ninety-four percent overall of all the students we surveyed, at least ninety-four percent, because we know there's some students who didn't respond to the survey, engaged in at least one of these extracurricular community service engagement-type activities. So, it is, you know, ninety-four percent, it's a little higher for eighth grade there, and a little bit lower for twelfth grade. But, here, you can see where the pattern is. You can see that, you know, that low twenty-three percent of sixth graders that participated in at least one co-curricular class, that's reflective of the opportunities, too. There's, I think, one or two possible co-curricular, it's like Symphony and something else that they can take. So, it makes sense that it's that much lower. But, you can see that over eighty percent of students across the board reported participating in at least one extracurricular activity that was not associated with the class. And then, when you look at community service and volunteer, it starts off around a third, because sixth graders probably don't have as much opportunity to get off the campus and go and do things. But, as you get up to twelfth grade, where students are more mobile, and also, probably doing things to start preparing for life and going to college, they're doing more volunteer, they're engaging with the community at almost two-thirds of the students report doing that. So, I'm going to actually turn it over, before we see if there's any more questions, and let, yeah, if you want to.
Technical support. So, we thought we would spend a few minutes talking with you tonight about the results of Gibson, and then, also, what the next steps that we were gonna take as a district in using these results. And the results that you shared tonight are actually actionable in both of our district improvement plan goals that we, that you all approved the last time we met. I thought I would take some time to highlight specifically the second goal, which is around the student environment and their experience in school, and what are some specific actions or some performance objectives that are in the plan around that, and how we intend to use some of the results of, that we're learning from Gibson to make some differences in the classroom, and also, in the environment that kids are experiencing they're learning in. So, the second goal is around, it states that students and staff experience a safe and secure learning environment that fosters a culture of respect, integrity, wellness, and citizenship. And the first goal is all about college and career readiness. And so, we've captured all of our performance objectives around each of the items that are containing, that are around their advancement into college or career readiness. Their results on the, in the state exam, their participation results in AVIB, certifications, and preparations for workforce, those are all part of our first goal. The performance objectives that are aligned directly to the second goal, which is about the students' experience, are part of the survey with respect to how kids feel about the quality of the learning in their classroom. One of the things we talked about in the survey was, the students, we solicit feedback from students about the experience they're having in class. And we want them to, we wanna know, are we making a difference in the things that we're doing as far as how they're, not just their outcomes, like how they're learning, but what their day-to-day experience is like in the classroom, and are they enjoying their learning? One of our goals that we're really trying to work on is how to improve the kids' perception of their learning experience, and is the journey along the way as meaningful to them as the actual endpoint? And so, the survey itself, we have that listed in our district improvement plan, because we wanna measure, are we in fact watching this improve as far as students' perception? And one of the samples that we shared with you last time we met about the district improvement plan is this example, which was, tell us about the quality of teaching at your school in each of the subjects. That's just one of the questions as a sample that the Gibson Consulting Group shared with you tonight. And we intend to use the overall outcomes of this portion of the survey to kind of help us gauge whether students' experiences in their classroom every day are in fact getting better. A couple of other areas that were aligned to safety that we shared with you last time we met were in connection to the discretionary placements at alternative schools and/or the OSS placement outside of campus, and then, the ratio between the all-student groups and special education. And so, we intend to monitor the outcomes of students' experiences and outcomes when it comes to our discretionary placements, as well in the all subgroup, in the all groups, as well as the special education subgroups. And then, also utilize the Gibson survey to share with us some information about how students are feeling about their experience when it comes to safety, not just what is the endpoint, meaning, are students in fact spending more time in the classroom, meaning, we're choosing to suspend students less, or send them to alternative settings? But, also, what is their experience like at school? Do they feel safe in the classroom? Do they feel safe in their environment at school or around school? We're interested in seeing that improve as well. So, what our next steps are is, we will be sharing district and campus disaggregated data with the principals next week. We anticipate those from the firm around Wednesday, and once we receive those, we'll be distributing them out to campuses. We will ask campuses to identify high-leverage targets that are connected to their school, and to include those in their campus improvement plans in connection to our district improvement plan. So, you, the examples I just shared with you were some sample performance objectives that we have aligned in our district improvement plan, and we have specific strategies that we will place in the plan to improve. And we'll ask principals to work with their teams to do the same thing in alignment with our plan at their individual campuses. The difference between what the campuses will do and what we'll do is they will be able to look at their results from their individual school, and the anomalies, or the outliers, or the specific areas in their school that are large trends. They can address them at their individual campuses to watch for improvements. Also, we'll be sharing with principals in the October seventh principal meeting, the district findings that you're hearing tonight, so they can see how their slice of the pie, so to speak, is impacting the overall system in general. And then, we're in the process of developing systems that are data-driven to allow us to monitor more effectively the outcomes of our district improvement plan targets in respect to these areas, so that we can see, are we actually making gains as we move through the school year, so that we don't have to wait till the end of the school year to see whether we just met the target or not? And then, finally, we will work to identify priority schools, and what are some of the root causes to their outcomes? So, which schools are struggling in some of these areas the most? And which, what are some of the root causes for the reason why kids are perceiving what they're perceiving at those schools? And what kind of support can we offer the campuses to help that improve? Some sample strategies you might see, as you peruse through the campus improvement plans, once they're published, our campuses might do some student-focus groups to actually talk with students over the course of the year to see how things are going. We may increase staff visibility in areas of the building or the campus where low visibility is typically the case, such as restrooms, or also, increase the frequency of security staff visits at identified campuses where students are feeling less safe. So, these are just some samples we wanted to provide you. So, we'll be working with principals and staff over the next few weeks as they prepare their campus improvement plans, and we'll be bringing those plans to you for approval in October.
Any questions?
Outstanding, thank you. I always look forward to this evening. It's a tremendous amount of information. As I say, we have a few trustees with questions, starting with Dr. Hibbs, no, Dr. Hibbs, Mr. Hibbs.
Dr. Wartz, actually, I wanna go in, on that slide right before on next steps. You have identified-
This one?
Whoop, come back, there you go.
Okay.
Identify priority schools and root causes from outcomes. I wanna ask the Gibson group, when you were doing, gathering the data, did you look at anything, especially when it was talking about maybe our economically disadvantaged student population? And, you know, one of the points, it said that there was a disparity with Hispanics, and maybe Hispanic males, in application for college. Did you collect any data to find out, you know, maybe if that, and I'm looking specifically for identifying the root causes and outcomes, potentially, that they're first-generation high school graduates? And then, you know, obviously, going into college, there may be a great apprehension there. There may even be apprehension with some of the households where the father may even choose, say, you know, I didn't go to college, you know, so there, you know, there may be those outlining factors where we go back with our parent universities and go to train those individual households, you know, that this is, this is a great opportunity for, you know, betterment or expansion, you know. Obviously, we're looking at our, through the district plan, through our certificate program, that will offer a great amount of mobility for individuals that may not have that cause. But, I was just wondering, in any of your questionnaires or anything, did you look at any of those key factors to find out if they were first-generation?
We did not, so that, oh, sorry. No, we didn't, we didn't have any questions about first-generation. If that's a, you know, if this is something that the district wants us to include in future years, we can. But, it wasn't something identified for us to sort of look into. It's something that's definitely interesting to us, and we look at with other research projects that we do. So, I think your point's a good one. But, we don't, we don't have, we don't, and more broadly than that, we don't ask questions about a lot of things outside of the campus.
Okay.
The original design of the survey in the first year was kind of a student experience survey for twelfth-grade students, and then, it was extended downward to the other grades. And it wasn't asked about home life and other factors that might influence, even though those are obviously incredibly important types of questions. But, I wish we had that data, we don't.
Yeah. And I think the other one that surprised me is that, when we were talking about the science, it dropped down at the eighth-grade level, and then, popped right back up for high school. Is determining what that, what is the trigger in eighth grade? Is it, kids are generally dissatisfied in being in the classroom? Or is it, is it a situation that there's a certain aspect of science that they're not keying in on?
It actually, it actually dropped between eighth and tenth. So, the tenth was where the drop is. And we, it held, that pattern held across the years of the survey, which we thought was really interesting. And, you know, again, we didn't ask why, but we, we, you know, sort of guessed, based on other things that we do in terms of looking instructional practice and quality, that, you know, you were, you have different types of courses in tenth grade, different science courses. Again, you're starting to take your chemistry and your physics, and the more technical, the terms change, the type of instruction that's required to teach those courses is different. And take that plus all the other engagement factors in high school versus lower grades. There's a pretty large drop there.
Yeah. Just made me think of something that's really cool. If we do this again next year, what we show you now is, we call it cross-sectional, we've got a bunch of eighth graders and a bunch of tenth graders, and we're looking at that change. But, because we surveyed them last year when they were in eighth, we surveyed eighth graders last year for the first time. If we do this again next year, we'll have the same students in tenth grade, and we'll be able to look at the same students and see if that drop is observed within student, or if it's a sort of a cross-sectional finding, or a longitudinal within-student finding. And I think it's a really good way to get at that question and figure out, is something changing within the students? Or is it more about the school and the classes that they're taking?
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Are there other trustees with questions or comments this evening?
It's an outstanding opportunity to get this look at the district, so that we can inform our work moving forward to strategic planning, but also what, Dr. Wertz, you have it, going back and applying this to our campus improvement plans as well. So I think it's a powerful tool. Appreciate everyone's time and involvement with this this evening. Thank you. And we'll move on then to our second item on our agenda for discussion in this evening, that is managed performance empowerment criteria and autonomies. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Solans. And this evening, we'd like to give the board an update on our MPE program and the autonomies that have been utilized, and then have a discussion about the metrics and things like that. So, Dr. Wertz.
President Solans, board members, Dr. Cavassos, I'm here tonight to share with you some more information about our Managed Performance Empowerment Program. This is part of the strategic plan, the current strategic plan that the board adopted back in 2012, '13 school year. MPE is a comprehensive theory of action where performance and instruction are managed within a culture of required standards and accountability. And the MPE, the MPE philosophy or theory combines the efficacy of a curriculum management system with the dynamics of a performance culture, and what it does is it directly ties empowerment that you offer to campuses to the quality or the level of performance they're experiencing. So in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is as schools become more and more higher-performing and meeting students' needs better and better, they receive greater and greater amounts of autonomy to make those decisions that they need to adjust it without necessarily direction by the central office. We, over the last few years, we've been working on improving this, finding ways to enhance the program, incentivize it, give principals more autonomies to interface with. And one of the things that's neat about the Managed Performance Empowerment Program or Theory of Action is that it really challenges our system. It requires us to think outside of the box. We have principals that will have ideas that are different than what we've normally or typically would see in a system, and it encourages us to think about doing things differently and allowing campuses some autonomy and some flexibility and meeting their students' needs in ways that we may not be thinking about. It also encourages innovation and collaboration, and we've really tried to streamline our communication in the program over the last couple of years, trying to minimize the response time between the requests made by principals and the actual implementation of the autonomies, streamline their understanding about what are the actual definitions of the autonomies, what can you actually do within the parameters of the autonomies that are available for you to select from, and how do you go about using them? And then we've also tried to start supporting some of the requests with new funding. When we initially implemented MPE programming, funding was not on the table. Principals who wanted to make some changes in their campus based upon these autonomies were asked to do so within the parameters of the budget that they already had at their campus. And this last school year, we made some enhancements that supported requests with additional funding, which was something new and very well received. Some opportunities for growth that we still want to continue to work on when it comes to the implementation of this theory of action is providing more increased or more dynamic training for the MPE campus leaders to increase the quality of the implementation. One of the things that we've noticed over the last several years when it comes to MPE is there's a little bit of apprehension in some ways, simply because some campus leaders are still needing some training or some understanding about what exactly does MPE mean and what kind of autonomies, what does it really mean to have some autonomy and how much parameter, how wide or breadth, what's the breadth of my parameters that I can actually work under? Also, we would like to work on incentivizing the MPE status to really use it, to leverage it as a place to foster increased outcomes or in student achievement. We, when you, when I get to the criteria that we're using to grant MPE status, it's intentionally designed to be somewhat rigorous. We are, MPE has some value when it in fact produces outcomes, meaning students are performing, there's a quality level of instruction happening at the school that's producing results for students, and the leaders are leaders with high capacity. And so, we want to incentivize MPE to encourage continual growth in our system. And then finally, we really would like to work with our department, our APT department, to try to find some ways to correlate the measures between the autonomy that principals are choosing to exercise and what that link is to the actual outcome students are experiencing. So if we are choosing to fund specific autonomies that principals are requesting, are those new things that they're implementing actually producing a result for kids? I want to share with you some examples of autonomies that were exercised during the last school year. And some of these, some of these requests were requested during the last school year, approved, and then we're seeing the implementation of them happening now. Some campuses chose to repurpose some positions to meet their campus needs, and some examples of those were, we had a principal that chose to change a testing facilitator position to an assistant principal to support the teachers and the leadership and the student body at their school. We had one principal at the high school who had an advanced academics coordinator and adjusted that position to an assistant principal that was focused solely on advanced academics, which was, which was a new idea. And then also, we had some that repurposed their guidance text positions to testing facilitators. We also created new positions. We added teacher support interventionists at some schools. Last year, we had some schools, if you'll remember, when we initially implemented teacher support interventionists, we had several non-title schools that had a half, they shared or they split one in between, one between two different schools. We had some of those schools who were MPE schools, and they asked to create the full position at their school, and we granted that. And then we also have some campus, campuses who's used to exercise the autonomy, to have some discretion over the professional development that they were providing at their school in lieu of things that we were providing here at the district level. That's, and I'll explain what that is in just a couple of minutes. We have two schools that implemented project-based learning, that model at their school, that was both Blanton Elementary and Young, and they worked with an organization called Engage. And project-based learning is a model of learning where students identify a question, they identify the things they already know, the things that they need to know, they conduct research, and they really direct their own learning, and the teacher really serves as a facilitator. This is, they're in their second year of implementation of this model. It's very seed-based, it's just kind of growing grassroots at both of those two schools, and this was initiated as part of their MPE status. And then finally, we had some school-wide technology initiatives that took place specifically. This is actually at Beckham Elementary, where they, where they provided weekly technology classes utilizing the space in their library and actually maximizing the use of their librarian in a different, in a more of a media specialist type of way, so that they could begin to implement professional learning and the use of technology across their campus. Those are just some examples.
Dr. Wertz?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask, out of these samples that you've given us here, did any of these call for additional funding?
Yes, and yes, they did.
And you identify which ones?
Uh huh. The, all the positions that were repurposed required additional funding, and also the creation of support positions required additional funding. Project-based learning required additional funding, and that's, that's it. So all of the bullets that I provide you, with the exception of campus discretion for professional development, and then also the technology classes. One thing I would like to note is the teacher support interventionists that were there, it really, in some ways, it would have required additional funding, but in the recent adoption of our board, our budget for this school year, we, you approved positions to provide teacher support interventionists at all the non-title schools. And so, it almost became a request that was made, but since it became part of our system in general, it didn't actually result in extended or additional funding. But initially, it was part of the funds that were approved for positions that were connected to MPE. Yeah.
I have another question for you, Dr. Wertz. I know it's not really in the scope of this presentation, but just curious on these examples, do we have data to point that these actually increased and enhanced the performance of the campuses?
No, the reason why we don't yet is because these positions were requested in April as part of their status. They were filled on August 10th is the date that we think that we identified as most of the dates. And so, what we need, what our intent is to do is to work with our data department to try and find ways to link. We'd have to use a regression model that I helped us to identify how, what, you know, what, how much positive effect these new implementations actually had, and if we can in fact align them to this being the reason. But we want to try to do that as closely as we can in some ways, yeah.
Sure, thanks.
The criteria that we're using this year to establish schools who are MPE are, you, every campus who is MPE has to have met the standard as far as state accountability goes, that's a minimum requirement, and then at least 70% of the total points. So what we do is we provide points on a matrix that, that is based upon these things. You receive one point for a percentage of students that are passing in each of the state indices for state accountability that's above the district average. So if, if you're at the district average or below, you don't receive a point. You get an extra point if you're working at above the district average. You receive one point for each possible distinction, and then the state accountability system has safeguards in place, system safeguards, to ensure that there's a minimum level of achievement among all student groups, and you have to meet the, all 100% of the system safeguards to show that your students are performing within those minimum requirements. Once you meet those criteria, then you go to the next layer, and you have to meet all these additional qualifiers in order to receive status. There has to be leadership readiness, meaning you have to be performing proficiently as a principal. You also have to have received 3.5 or greater average on your employee engagement and parent engagement surveys, and then you have to have demonstrated fiscal responsibility as a campus principal. This is just a matrix that kind of shows you the breakdown of what it would look like. So if you, as you can see, if you can see in this area over here, there we go, this is the initial qualifier points, and here will tell you the total points possible that you could receive based upon your distinctions and indices and safeguards, and this is the 70% value that they have to receive in order to qualify. And then once they meet at least the minimum criteria for the number of points, then we move to this area over here. And if you meet also all of these, these two areas, these areas plus the point value, then you, then you earn status for MPE. MPE status is granted for two consecutive years, so as soon as you receive MPE status, that's a two-year, it's a two-year qualifier. So if, for example, the following year, you did not meet qualifying criteria, you would be able to carry over your status for one more year, and if you, if you didn't meet it the second year in a row, then you would lose status. And the reason why we provide two years of status is because sometimes there's an implementation dip when you're trying something new. And we don't want to discourage innovation, and so by allowing principals to have two years of status once they earn it, they're, and they're encouraged to take risks that will do, that will provide positive outcomes for students. And if they experience a dip in implementation the first year, there's no penalty for that. They still have another year to watch that dip come up. If their trend continues to go down, then they would have to re-earn their actual MPE status. This is a list of the schools that are designated campuses this school year for MPE. I provided with you, I provided to you that the campuses that were on the other, on the far left are those that were identified last year, and then in the middle column are those this year. And then I also provided you a list of when their term expiration will occur, whether that will be at the end of this school year or the end of next school year. If, if it says the end of this school year, which is 2016, this is because the campus last year did not qualify for MPE, and so they're now in their second year, and in order to maintain that status, they'll have to meet requirements for this school year. You have a question? Okay.
I'm just wondering, I don't know off the top of my head, can you identify for me? And if not, that's okay.
Sure.
Are any, well, which ones of these are Title I schools?
Yes, I can tell you most of them. I think I can do it. Okay. Arlington Collegiate High School is a Title I school. Ausley is a Title I school. Gunn is a Title I school. Bryant is a Title I school. Beben C. is a Title I school. Swift is a Title I school. No, it's not. Is Swift Title I? Yes, it is. And Williams is a Title I school.
Thank you.
Okay. Piercy is not. No. No, they're not. Yeah. So, so you'll notice on the left-hand column in 2014, '15, you may see, there are two schools there that were at one point MPE, and they're not this year. They'll have an opportunity to re-qualify at the end of this school year once again. This is an example of some of the autonomies that we are offering or that is part of this system, what campuses principals will receive, once we, once they're, we've already notified them, and then what we will do is we'll call a meeting with them, we'll kind of go over our, this presentation, the details of it once again. Some of them, some of our MPE campuses have had the same status for all these years, all three years, and so it'll be kind of, they'll know this information. But what we do at that time is we go over in detail again what the parameters of each of the autonomies are. We provide them with a very simple, simple application where they, where they select which autonomies they actually want to exercise. And then if there's an autonomy that they want to exercise that's not on the list, then it goes through a process which I'm about to explain. So there are several autonomies. One is we allow MPE campus no limit on the percentage of their rollover funds. We also allow them to have some discretion on how they utilize their funding for district-funded initiatives. We also allow them to convert FTE to their discretionary budget. So if you have a full-time employee who vacates their position and they don't want to fill the position, they'd rather take the dollars to apply it to some, something else at their school, we allow them to do that. When they go to staffing, we give them the opportunity to consider changing the number and type of staff at their staffing meeting based upon the needs of their school, which may be different or outside the typical formula. We also allow them to define or redefine some of the roles and responsibilities for their staff positions. So I'll give you one example. Last year, we had one, one school who had a person that was serving in a coach role, and they really wanted to redefine that role so that it was much more about, connected to data and driving systems at the school. And so, we allowed them to really redefine that, that role altogether, but the person stayed the same, they just redefined the actual FTE itself. And then also, we allow principals to repurpose positions within one job category. So, for example, the sample that I gave you is we had a person who was an academic, an advanced academics coordinator. The next job category advancement was assistant principal, and the principal chose to make that as an MPE request, and so we do allow them to repurpose within job, one job category, and in some cases, we absorb that cost. Curriculum and assessment, we do allow MPE campuses to deviate from the assigned curriculum and academic assessments. You can choose to not participate, but you, the, when we say deviate, it's not participate, it's not deviating from the calendar, it's deviating from participation. The reason why we, we're, we don't allow deviation from the calendar is because we want to have some system-wide data and be able to push it back to campuses in a timely way. And when, when you pull, when you have campuses that are just doing it at random times, it makes the data for all the schools that aren't MPE unclean, and so we're trying to, we try to make sure that we don't hinder the non-MPE campuses' ability to make meaningful decisions. So we allow campuses to opt in or out, but not necessarily deviate from the schedule.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
So, one of the challenges that we face is the mobility of our students, and you've spoken previously about our curriculum alignment.
Right.
Can you just speak a little bit to, does them deviating from the district-assigned curriculum affect that alignment?
Well, they don't, they don't, they don't, they don't deviate from the curriculum. They, the curriculum assessments and, the curriculum, so the academic assessments and curriculum, so this is the CA, it's like the curriculum assessments that we provide. So the curriculum is non-negotiable, regardless of which school you are at, you have to follow the curriculum. But you can deviate from the curriculum assessments that we generate at the camp, at the district level, and you can choose to do your own at your campus level if you want to. Yeah, that's a good question. Thanks for the clarifier. The other thing that a campus can do is they can choose to opt into or out of district-provided professional development sessions. So a campus who wants to start a new initiative at their school around some very specific topic, for example, professional, project-based learning, and they want to do that in lieu of district-provided professional learning, they can request that. Also, principals are given 50% weight in evaluation of campus support staff, so there are support staff that go to campuses, they're not necessarily only under the direction of the principal, like a diagnostician, custodial staff. If you're an MPE campus, we want to start this as an opportunity for principals to have 50% weight in their evaluation, even though they're not supervising them directly. Also, a campus principal can opt into or out of the CIP approval process. So right now, every campus is required by law to draft a CIP, and it does have to be in alignment with the district improvement plan. However, we have a process that they go through, which is they submit their drafts, the area superintendents review them, they give them feedback. If you're a campus that's performing to the level that allows you to have status of MPE, you can draft your CIP, but you don't have to necessarily go through that process, you have the autonomy to just work the system. And then finally, you as a principal have the opportunity to apply for a, an additional autonomy that's not listed here, that you can apply with your area superintendent, there's a process that we go through. And the, the last one is really important because that's really where a lot of the innovation comes from. That's where principals can think outside the box, try something new, and we really want to encourage this. We had one campus principal that was really, like I gave you the example earlier, project-based learning, that was out of the box. It was trying something new and different, it was, it deviated from the list of autonomies, that was an idea that they chose. The duration, as I said, is two consecutive years, and it can be removed during the middle of that two-year cycle if for some reason we find that there is violations of board policy occurring, if there's a significant drop in any state accountability index, if there's a break- The duration, as I said, is two consecutive years and it can be removed during the middle of that two-year cycle if for some reason we find that there is violations of board policy occurring, if there's a significant drop in any state accountability index, if there's a break in the continuous campus leadership, so if a new principal ends up going to the school, they, we discontinue MPE and then also if there's a decrease in leadership readiness enough to sustain autonomy, then we, then we also terminate MPE. Go ahead.
Everybody knows where I'm going with this.
I know exactly what question you're about to ask.
Break in service, you know, with the leadership of the campus. We're training in many cases to have, you know, with our individual trainings to bring in top-notch principals to a campus.
Right.
I still have a very hard time thinking that if we promote a principal from one campus to another, the campus that they're leaving that's been stellar loses this status. I, I struggle with that. I just struggle with that. I think that we're empowering that next leader to come in to take charge of that campus. You give them that opportunity. It may be a one-year term, but you give them that opportunity to continue on. You don't penalize the entirety of the campus due to a principal leaving. I mean, you know, if we promote somebody to an area superintendent, we, we have somebody that we, that was such a superstar, somebody stole them away. I mean, I just have a problem with that one. So I'll leave it and let the rest of the board discuss.
So I think that that's a good point and I think a good way to balance that is to have some discretion on that. So it's not, we can make it where it's not absolute, but they would, they would have to go through a process to make sure that, like for example, because you bring up some good examples, if they're an experienced principal that we're hiring that's already had an experience as a principal, they provided leadership at other campuses and things like that, then we should have that discretion to say that break isn't a cause for a concern. So I'm, I'm okay, I think, in terms of not being absolute about it, but allowing the administration to have some discretion.
If I can weigh in on this, related to that, it's not just a question of the new campus leadership coming into play. It is what, what that superstar did that left that campus, some of the autonomies that they put into place. That's what I'm concerned about, that, you know, whether, whatever discretion through these autonomies that they've implemented that they did for a reason that is working at that campus, I mean, essentially those would dissolve and...
Yeah, it, it sounds that way. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And I'd say it's, it's the same discretion and, and the thing that, there's several things that have changed here a little bit. One is that we've invested funding now. So when we repurpose some of these positions, it's because we've invested some funding the district has and the fact that some of our hires have been experienced principals and all that. So I think that discretion is important. I don't think it should be absolute, but I also don't think it should just be automatic either. So some discretion about, do they continue even though there's a break? And then are there some, and these, these items, that's exactly what MPE, in a real ironic way, that's exactly what MPE is supposed to do. It's supposed to challenge the system. It's supposed to challenge the conventional wisdom, if you will. So if you put in something as part of your MPE and then you have a break, do you take that away or do you leave it so that they can regain it, right? That's a challenge for us and we don't have enough years into it to say, yeah, we would take it away or we wouldn't. I think discretion is really important and that's part of this MPE learning process. So I'm in agreement that, you know, we, we should exercise that discretion when we come to situations like this and not be absolute about it.
It, it would probably be helpful to keep us informed on, on what those, what those campuses, where those changes are, what those discretion choices are and so that, so that we're aware of them when we might have communications with either that campus or parents, et cetera.
And I think the way we would capture that is when we bring the list every year, like we're doing now, we would note this one had a break, but we continued it in leadership or this one had lost, but we're keeping the MPE. We're not that far into it yet to have that kind of pattern or cohort, if you will. So those notations, I think, are going to be very significant as we move forward and add more campuses and some, for whatever reason, have to be taken off.
Ms. Walton?
Thank you, President Solins. I would just like to add that, you know, we're talking mainly about the administrative leader, campus leadership and so forth, but, you know, they are in partner with the faculty and the staff and everyone else in that building. And where the administration might change, usually most of the faculty stays in place. So I, I think that we have to, you know, give that faculty and those teachers who are in the trenches and, and helping these children learn what they need to know so that they can meet standards and get distinctions and that sort of thing credit there too. And that should be weighed in on the discretionary end of allowing the MP three, MPE to continue.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Hogg has a question.
Yeah, thank you, President Solins. Ms. Walton, I agree. It's, I agree with your point on that. It's, and I, so with that, I agree with the discretion because it is as much as the staff's award is, is a principal's award on that case, but if we lose a principal for certain reasons, there can be reasons. So the process, I understand, not guaranteeing designation, but Mr. Hogg's all agree with you that carrying it over, I think, is a big thing. Because the concern I have with MPE the whole time is you make these changes and all of a sudden you're going back and you made the changes and all of a sudden pull them back out. Now, curriculum assessments, if you don't have MPE, guess what? You're back to doing those, hundred percent. But taking someone from an AP position back to a testing facility, that's got to be a determination of where it's going. So Dr. Wertz, let me, let me ask this question. We've been talking about MPE for years. We're one of the districts that actually has implemented a successful MPE, which is not very common in districts around the state and the country. Is it still really impactful to the principals? Does it still have the, the lure? Thank you, Ms. Walton, for that word. And then I would even ask, so yeah, it may be to the principals and then maybe Mr. Nix answers this. Are the teachers really excited about this?
Well, I, I can tell you, that's one of the areas that I mentioned where we want to continue to improve is to incentivize it, right? Because it's still new. It's still an abstract concept in education, learning what this might mean. I think our application of autonomies, as far as like granting them and what that looks like, is still new for principals. When you say, hey, think outside the box and let's see what some new ideas you come up with and where there's initial apprehension, is that, what do you mean exactly? Can we really do that? And then, and then also the timeliness at which we respond also impacts the incentive, right? When we first started initially, we were still trying to figure out, how do you process these requests that seem so outside of the box, right? And now we're trying to make it much more efficient, so we're getting better over time. And so I think as time goes on, it will become much more incentivized. I think one of the things that we want to do and we'll do this again this year, which we did last year, is for the MPE schools, especially those who have been MPE for the last couple of times and even for the new ones, to ask them, you know, what, what, how, how does it feel to you? What are some things that we can do to make it more, to incentivize it more with you? What are some requests that you may be, maybe be considering that you're apprehensive about? One of the areas that we also mentioned that we can probably improve in is just our training around MPE. I think that impacts people's perception of it. Principal, I mean, teachers' awareness of whether their campus is MPE, has MPE status or not, is usually primarily driven by how vocal or how alert the principal makes them at their school. Because print, let's, most teachers are very much in, focused on their, their students and their teaching and the day-to-day operations of their school. If you look at the autonomies that are listed, most of the autonomies are related to things, actions that a principal would take, like opting, I mean, changing a position or making a decision about funding or changing staff development opportunities and things like that. And so the more inclusive a principal is in the decision-making at their school, the more aware a faculty is going to be about their MPE status. And that is something we really encourage principals to do. The more inclusive they are in their decision-making, usually the much more, the more effective the principal is. So in some ways, where, those are areas we're still working on. I think it's gotten better over the last few years. It just, we still have room to grow.
I would expect nothing less than getting better over the years. I remember our first year of MPE and the five principals that sat here and they're like, what did we get? What is going on? And we were wondering, what are they going to get? What autonomies? And, but the, conceptually, it's a wonderful program. The, the better your, yeah, you listen, your schools are at things, we're going to let you run. Run with it. Run the way you need to go. One thing I would ask for a calculation is what we expect the total cost of the MPE program is costing us.
Okay.
And if you don't have that tonight, just send it to us.
Well...
So we can see what the total cost is.
Right now, we've approved requests for, the MPE request for two hundred and seventy thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars approximately. And this year we budgeted approximately three hundred dollars for new, three hundred thousand dollars for new requests.
Okay.
In the budget.
Perfect. I think it's fair and as long as we're building our budget every year, buy more power to them. Let's, let's make it work and make it powerful and the more, I know it's principals, but the more teachers can understand and make it a win. And hopefully as the principals get more creative with autonomies, I think it will reflect a little bit more down to direct staff. So thank you.
Ms. Mays?
Thank you. This kind of goes along the same lines, looking at the MPE autonomies that you offer the principals and then the special category. I'm interested in knowing how many of the principals utilize all or most of the suggested autonomies? And then how many actually go outside the box and do the special?
Most principals all use all of the ones that we exercise. We allow them the option. They say, I choose this and we grant it to them and we give them discretion. I think sometimes they request it and then don't actually take action on it. I'll give you an example, like they may say, yes, I want the discretion to opt out of CAs or opt out of professional learning that's offered at the district level. But then as time goes throughout the school year, they may decide, well, I actually think that's going to be valuable for my staff, so I'm going to send them anyways. But we, they have the leave, the choice to do it because they've requested and it's been granted. As far as outside the box, it really depends on what we're defining as outside the box. So for example, in the past, we had, we didn't have principals requesting new positions altogether. We were talking about repurposing positions. Well, now we have principals asking for new positions altogether. So some might say, well, that's outside of the box. When I, when I personally think of outside the box, I don't think about programming differences and the way we go about our work. So the project-based learning, that's outside of the box. We have one principal at a junior high that really wanted to look at, how do I, if I was to design an academy or something of that sort at my school, what would that look like and how would I go about that work? We said, go ahead and start thinking about it, bring in a proposal. That was outside of the box kind of thinking that she requested through her MPE process. So when, so we do have some principals that are taking initiative around those areas. I think it's new because we're now in an environment in our district over the last couple of years where we've been encouraging that risk-taking and we've been designing innovative programs so people are starting to think about things in a different way. So I suspect that we're probably going to see much more of that kind of request than we, than we have in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, and that's kind of where I was leading. I would like to know, not just now, but maybe in the future as we continue with these reports, is not just how many of the principals say, yes, we'll do that, but how many truly are.
How many actually do.
Yeah.
We have...
Really like to know how much is truly being utilized.
Okay.
And then, being the great district that Arlington is, I am excited about that special box of our principals coming up with new ideas, like program ideas, where we can actually use that and start implementing it district-wide because it's so successful. That's what I'm looking forward to.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Dr. Wertz, I think this may be leading or adding on to Mr. Hogg's comments. It's been a few years. We started this and we've talked about it a long time. And the first years, we, we were able to get a tremendous policy out and work through it. But what are we doing to evaluate? What are we doing to ask principals to participate in the evaluation of this program? I mean, going forward, what do you recommend that we do for program evaluation of MPE?
We need to place it on our program evaluation list and I think part, for me, it's twofold. There's the quantitative, which gets to what Dr. Reich was asking for, which is here are the list of autonomies that we've been granting. What is the direct correlation between those granting, those autonomies that we've granted and the actual outcomes of students and, and that? So that's one level. And then the other is qualitative, actually interviewing and talking with the principals, both those who are in the MPE program and those who aren't. On the ones that aren't, maybe what their perceptions of the program are, does it feel like an incentive to them, things like that? And those who are in the program, does it really meet their needs? Is the response time effective or is it, is there a timely response time? Do they feel like they truly have the autonomy to make decisions and take risks to try programming needs? If that's not their perception, what are some changes we can make in our communication or in our, in our interaction with them to help encourage that more? I think there are two sides to that, to that question.
And might that come in some format like a survey, which have become the standard in the district?
Absolutely.
So that the principals can, can share freely their, their thoughts and so they help us to build the best program?
Yeah, I mean, there's multiple ways we could do it. One of the points that I made in the presentation as well is the idea of providing professional learning to the MPE principals themselves. And I think during those times where we have them in that small cohort, asking them questions even in the form of a survey where we can get some candid, honest feedback, that's either anonymous, that will help us understand what their true insights are about the program and if they're, they have ideas about ways that we can enhance it. Yeah, I'm, I think we're very open to that.
I think it's an outstanding idea to, campuses, to have more autonomy on campuses and especially with our leaders on the campus to make the decisions at that level. We have, I just, one question on the term, the two-year term. And it starts immediately, as soon as they're named, right? Does it, what is the, I'm sure it takes some time for the principal then to come in and review the possibilities and create a proposal and bring it forth. Do they have like a year boots on the ground or eighteen months? Or, you know, by the time that all of that goes through the system, through funding and so forth?
That's a good question and our, and our goal is to be timely. So what we do is, once we share it with you all, who the list is, we'll be calling a meeting where we give them a description of all the autonomies that are available and immediately at that point, we provide them with the application and then we give them a window of time to consider and then they can place their application in. But the thing about being MPE is you can, you can exercise any of the autonomies at any point. So in the initial application, it's just, it's only designed for us to have some communication with them about what are your initial intents so that we can support you. But let's say I'm a principal and I decide initially that I don't want to take advantage of professional learning. I would really like just to use, utilize what the district's already offering. But then in December or even a year later, I decide, you know, I really want to have some autonomy. I see some new needs and we're going in a different direction. All they have to do is let their area superintendent know that they, they're requesting that and we'll grant it. We don't, we don't use the application as a way of barring, like this is the only moment you can ask. It's simply a way for us to have some communication and to encourage people to take advantage. Because in the first couple of years, what we noticed is we would offer them autonomies and then the timeliness at which they were actually asking for them, we found that it was really delayed. And so we thought, how can we encourage people to start taking advantage of it? And so we thought, well, if we, if we at least talk about what the actual autonomies are and then give them at least a window to say, okay, give us your initial thoughts, then we can begin the conversation. And so that's how we do it. You'll find that in some cases, like most of the positions that I talked about, those were actually solicited in the, in the spring and granted in like April. So they asked for position changes even later on in the second semester. It didn't have to happen in that window. So it's ongoing the whole two years. Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Ms. Walton has a question.
Thank you, President Solins. In the evaluation of the program that you are considering and in the design phase as we are right now, could we possibly consider including others on that administrative team or on that building team to be included in that evaluation process also? Instead of just the principals or involving, you know, the, you know, teachers?
Yeah.
Counselors, facilitators, I mean, the other people that have been integral to the, to the process.
Yeah, I think that if we were going to do a program evaluation and we were going to solicit, for example, a qualitative side, which is around surveys, I think it would lend itself well to ask the members of the faculty what their perception of the program is. Do they even know about it? Have they heard about it? Do they feel it's impacting the way their school's functioning? Absolutely. We wouldn't want to limit it to just the principals. I think we would want to get the principal's information, see if the principal's perception's the same as their staff's perceptions, all of that. Yeah.
I think that would be excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Reich?
Going to the, sorry, the evaluation of the acceptance of somebody or a campus for MPE, the criteria that you've delineated is mainly focused on state accountability. Is how it seems mostly to me. And I don't know, I don't remember what our initial metrics were, that we employed two, three years ago. It would seem to me that...
It would seem to me that we should have some more, uh, opportunities, uh, for them to be evaluated as a campus on. I know for us as the board, you know, we're very clear that state accountability is just one little piece in the whole big picture. And, uh, so one, one suggestion related to that is, uh, the utilization of the, uh, the survey data, seeing that's kind of tied to scorecards and everything that we're doing aligned from the top down in the district. That maybe there's, I don't know if it's, it would be a valid metric to use, but that's just a, just an example of a thought. Do you have, um, uh, any input or thoughts on what other things might, might be considered for an MPE criteria?
Well, we tried to balance it between student achievement, which in, in the state of Texas is measured mainly by the state accountability system. But we tried to find some balance in that, in not only, like, how well were you performing on STAR, but how were you performing in comparison to other schools that look like you? Which is why the distinctions actually have a really large weight in, not, well, I wouldn't even say a large weight, but it has, it has an ability for a campus to recover, uh, or gain extra points, just because it's not about just meeting the minimum standard. It's really about excelling. So we, that's one area. On the other side, um, the, of the qualifying criteria, there's the side where you, there's a minimum side, meaning like, you have to at least meet the standard, meaning if you're a school that's in required improvement, and you are, eh, under sanction with the state, where you were assuming, based on MPE status, we're assuming that you're a school that's in need of assistance, and so you're not really a school that's in a position to have autonomy. We really need to engage with you to support you, because if not, your sanctions will become more severe with the state. But because that's not the only, once you meet that minimum criteria, the other side of criteria that you have to meet in order to qualify is you have to, um, have leadership readiness, which is proficiency as a principal. You have to have 3.5 or higher in your employee engagement and in your parent engagement surveys. So it's, you, it's not, you, even if you, even if you qualified with all state accountability, and we had this scenario with one of our schools, um, where, but you didn't meet the survey requirements around how engaged your employees were, or how your parents were feeling about the environment of their school, you, you couldn't qualify. So even if you were the highest-performing school, if those areas weren't also met, um, you wouldn't qualify for MPE. We tried to have both sides.
Okay, and I see that you already covered that. Okay, um, well, very good. I, I do, I, I guess I'm, I'm hypersensitive to any, any focus on state accountability. I've consistently, I think we've all consistently stated that we, uh, although the accountability system is much improved over what it was, it, it's still flawed, and it still is a blip in time and not an accurate reflection of, of growth of, of student achievement necessarily. And so, uh, I, I guess it goes back to the same adage of, we, we want to shoot up here for up here, not for the state average, which is here. Um, we, we want to go all the way to the top. So anything that, that you can come up with that, uh, with our accountability folks, that can make it, uh, a, a valid metric, I think we'd all be very appreciative of.
No problem.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Now, Dr. Wertz, several minutes ago, we jumped in the middle of your presentation. I know there was another...
There's only one more slide. I don't know if you're interested.
No, there's one slide left.
I can tell you...
If there's something you wanted to add or share with us about the, the final slide, I appreciate your patience with this eager board that had a lot of questions.
It's really simple. I just wanted to provide you with a graphic that kind of taught you, articulated to the board, the process that a principal goes through in order to have their autonomies granted. Basically, the campus conducts their needs assessment, identifies the areas of need that they want, um, to address at their school. They make application, um, to the area superintendent in writing, and that application is reviewed by an MPE review committee, which consists of the area superintendents, myself, members of some key departments in the district who would be affected by their, by their decisions, HR, finance, things like that. And then once the, um, review committee looks at their requests, and their requests are, are then submitted to the superintendent for approval, and once the final approval is given, then the super, the area superintendent notifies the principal in writing of their, of their autonomies. I will say, um, in some ways, so much of this is a formality, because all the autonomies that are automatic to you, those are really not the ones that the review committee is focusing on. We're going to grant them to you just by sake of MPE. It's the special ones that we really wanted to look at, because those are the ones that are challenging the system in new ways, or the ones that are going to require us to think outside the box. And so we need key stakeholders around the table to think about, okay, here's the request, how do we help them make this happen? So that's the process that we kind of go through. So...
Ms. Hudson?
I just had one follow-up question.
Sure.
So as we're trying to grow this program, and obviously encourage, um, performance, are, um, are we working with the principals who are maybe close? You know, they're meeting standards, but maybe they're not there on their surveys or whatever. How are we working with them? Are we already encouraging them to put together a plan and dream big and kind of have it ready? And then just working with them to put in those extra things so that they can hit that goal?
Yeah, um, what we do is when we analyze the process for identifying who the campuses are, we look at every school. We put them all through the same metrics, and we can identify specifically which, which campus has missed it by one point, which ones missed it because their employee engagement survey was off, but everything else was met. We had that scenario. And so what the area superintendents can do is when they're meeting with their principals one-on-one, they can let them know, this is kind of where you fell for MPE status. Um, this is the one area you missed. What are some things that we can do to support you to increase that area? Um, if it's areas of, of student achievement, where the area superintendents will work with them around that area. If it's areas around employee engagement, they'll also have conversations with them about that. So, yes, um, the area superintendents will receive the entire matrix around each of their schools and have opportunities to dialogue with their, with their principals about that.
Awesome. Thanks.
Yeah.
Dr. Reich?
I was just curious on the, uh, uh, review process, especially for the, the special category. I, I know you, you said that you go through it, uh, pretty quickly, pretty quick turnaround. Is there a, a maximum review time that you've given yourselves as, as far as a service, uh, a point of quality service back to the campus to review?
Yeah, the challenge is not necessarily in us reviewing the pro, reviewing the, um, the requests and then approving it. The challenge that we're experiencing in some cases is how fast we can implement it. That's usually the case. Um, and so it, it really is hard to answer that, because it depends on what the request is. And I'll give you a quick example. If, if it's principals requesting PBL, that's project-based learning. We could sit at the table in one day and identify, do we have the resources? Can we do that? But the actual implementation of that process takes a little longer, because in that case, they, they contracted with an organization called Engage. Well, you have to go through the contract process, you have to have your teachers trained. So it just, how fast we implement each of those really depends on what the request is. But the process that takes long, um, or if there's length to the process, it's not about how fast it takes us to say yes or no. It's usually about how fast it takes to actually go from request to actual implementation.
Gotcha. And obviously, you'll be, you are in communication with that campus leadership to say that this is what we're doing.
In fact, our, um, as soon as they make their, their request to us and the application, and it's approved, we send them notification in writing. What we're trying to do, our effort is actually trying to minimize the gap between, yes, you can do it, and now you're actually doing it. Yeah. I think that's where principals are wanting the expediting to happen.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Reich, and I don't see lights, but this is a portion of the meeting where I'm usually taken by surprise by a light. So I'm going to count to four or five, and I don't see... I don't see any, I don't see any further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider this evening? Thank you, thank you. Just checking, just checking. It is 9:11, and now we will move to closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the purposes listed in the posted agen, agenda this evening. Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your time.